I'll call this regular council meeting in the Village of Graham and Anne to order at 7:32 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Carl Winkersall.
Part of tonight, thank you for our council, council members, those who give their time and their interest and their passion for our community. We pray your blessing upon the meeting and all the business that's done. We'd ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. So for opening remarks, I'm going to take a little detour and I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons to start with.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Library manager has retired, and tonight we would like to thank and recognize Kendra Neves for her 22 years of service as our library manager. If they could come up, we have... Kendra has worked tirelessly to build the library in what we have today. The programs and resources that are offered at the library are a lasting tribute to her and the staff's dedication and the hard work of our library. Our library is second to none, really, the size of it and everything, the programs that are offered, the resources that you have there, just second to none. And we really do appreciate all that you've done, all the hours you've put in, the commitment you've made, making the place, a place where people want to go and work and then just to, we just would like to recognize that and thank you so very much. We do appreciate it. We have the certificate for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just...
Oh, oh, yes. Well, he, oh yeah, the light is bad.
Yeah, just, I want to say that it has been a huge privilege. I've always felt it was a huge privilege to be able to work for the community in that capacity as library manager. There was always lots more we could do and I always felt like we weren't getting enough done, but it is a great place to be. If you haven't been there, haven't got your library card, make sure you stop in and get it. And it's great to know that I'm leaving it in the capable hands of Sean Bethke.
Talking about this mysterious Sean Bethke, we have him with us tonight, so we'd like to welcome him to Graham and Anne.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have obviously very large shoes to fill, so I want to thank Kendra. She's been very magnanimous in the turnover. I'm very happy to be here. I only wanted to come to Graham and Anne to run this library. I told the government in New Brunswick, so I'm very happy to be here. I've been trying to learn about the community. I've been studying history, meeting a lot of people, talking about a lot of things. I encourage everyone to come down to the library and tell me what you want to see out of your library, and I invite council to come and have a look. And if you haven't been to the library for a while, come and see us, and I think you'll see what we can do over the course of the next little while. So, thank you very much for having me down. And once again, I want to thank Kendra for everything, so.
Thank you.
Happy to be here.
So if you see Sean around, just be sure to welcome him to the island and we appreciate you being here.
Wonderful welcoming experience so far. Real Graham and Anne welcome.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Welcome, Sean, and thank you, Kendra. I echo those comments. And leave it to Kendra to put a pitch in for library cards and her final parting words, so. That was classic. I just have a couple of other things I wanted to mention before we get into the bulk of the meeting. The first thing would be just a reminder that school started last week, which means it's now a 30 coming through Grand Harbor again, and it always takes a couple of weeks to get adjusted back down to the speed limit, but just a reminder to keep an eye out for that. And the other thing I thought worth mentioning, because it certainly has been getting a little bit of conversation over the weekend and then today on Facebook, is with Hurricane Lee churning down in the South Atlantic, looking like it could be heading towards maritime. We've started conversations with our EMO. If there's any specific updates for the island, we'll continue to update them on our Facebook page, but taking a page out of Kendra's book, I'm going to put a plug in for our Voyant system. If you haven't signed up, make sure you do, because that is the best way to get information quickly, particularly if the internet or anything like that is down. So, with that, I think that wraps up opening remarks, and we'll move on to item number four, which is disclosure of conflict of interest. Counselor Green has declared on 17-1. Anyone else? Item number five is adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting of August 14th, and those are circulated in the package.
A move that we adopt the minutes of the council meeting on August 14th?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Item number six, I'm going to apologize for right now, but I'm going to add two things that I was going to do in my opening remarks, but I thought it would be better if we had the opportunity to have a little bit of discussion if needed. I'd like to add, under new business, 14.6 and .7, a public safety update from a meeting last week, and then a credit union update as well. And I'd also suggest we add enclosed session 18-2 for legal for the CND site. And then, the treasurer has given me a couple of more invoices from the general operating fund. We have Dutchman for the CND site for $59,130. And Dutchman for paving here at the village office, and that was for $8,050. I hope I've got that amount right? Okay. And then from the general capital fund, there was another one for Brunswick Engineering for the airport for $46,550. And the amount for Route 776 tire, have I got this right, is the wrong amount. It should be 519.69. Okay? So I'm sure that was as clear as mud, but those are suggestions, if anybody would like to make a motion for those. You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried? All right. We'll be right on to number seven, the CRCMP.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Feels a little funny being shifted over, but that's okay. Also feel like I haven't been here in a little bit, so I am glad to make it out again tonight and touch base with everyone again. Going over our files for this past month of August, 2022, August, we had 77 files that we responded to. This year, in August, we had 87, so a little increase there. We did have 18 files with charges laid or recommended. Eleven of those were traffic tickets or traffic offenses, and then seven were criminal code offenses, including a break and enter, assault with a weapon, failing to comply with conditions, possession of property obtained by crime, assault, and theft. Just wanted to mention, because in the spring, there was a lot of attention to property crime here, that what we were seeing in terms of these charges this past month, these are more people who were known to the victim, wasn't random acts like we were seeing in the spring. And the one theft charge that's been laid is regarding a shoplifting complaint from one of the convenience stores where the suspect was easily identified and located. A breakdown of the complete file count into the more major items here. We did have two assault with a weapon and six assault investigations, five for a break and enter, two coroner act or sudden death responses, three failing to comply with conditions, two for fraud, eight were mischief, one missing person who was confirmed safe and located, and then two other well-being checks, five theft reports, one of sexual assault, and two of uttering threats. And we did have 19 that were the traffic offenses, collisions, off-road vehicles, that type of thing. And I did want to kind of mirror what Madam Mayor reminded about school being back in. It can be an exciting time of year, but a very good reminder that the school's own speed is back in effect, 30 kilometers an hour, and that is from 7:30 in the morning till 4 o'clock in the afternoon. I know some different places laid out differently, where some say when children are present, some have a break over lunch, and different things like that. This is right from 7:30 in the morning to 4 o'clock in the afternoon, Monday to Friday. So be aware of that. This also applies to teachers and parents as well that are going into the school. Sometimes people are late and they're rushing to get their kid dropped off. Not an excuse to speed in there. And so everybody's aware speeding in a school zone is $340 fine, and if you're over the limit by 25 kilometers an hour, which is only 55 kilometers an hour when you're going through there, it's $580. So it's significant, should be a good deterrent. Also be mindful of school buses out there picking kids up and dropping them off. Make sure you're slowing down for their yellow lights and stop when their red lights are flashing. The ticket for failing to stop for a school bus with their flashing red lights is $292. So, good reminder for everybody to be aware of and be a little bit more careful when they're driving during those times. That's all I have to share this evening, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them.
Any questions?
Sounded a little busier than usual.
There were a few spurts in August that seemed... But as the month went on, things slowed down again, which is good, and this past week or two have been calmer as well, so that's been good. Nothing that I could really point to as a particular reason for an increase in calls or anything like that, but...
Not that this would, you know, ever happen to me, but what if schools not in, in your over 30, on a Monday to Friday, does that still count?
It's a good question. It would be something to look into there, and I'm not sure how the system is set up there when those, when this sign starts displaying your speed or not, if it is just set strictly to Monday to Friday. My initial thought would be that if school isn't in and teachers aren't in or anything like that, that it probably wouldn't be in effect. But there are times when teachers might be in for in-service and things like that, that probably technically the school zone would still apply. That's a good reminder anyways, because the playground is there and there usually are kids out and around that area to just to go slower through that section. A lot of people on the roadway, walking.
It doesn't hurt to slow down, but sometimes I do catch myself when I know there's no school, so that's good to know. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Before I confessed anything else with my sled foot. That's what I'm afraid of. Our next item is the 10-minute open session. Sure, go up to the mic. I will just, as a reminder, because we haven't done this for a little bit, during the open session, we can't respond to comments or anything like that. It's just an opportunity to speak, so. Okay?
A small cottage just past Pettis Cove Arts gift shop across from the beach entrance. Old timers know it as Stella Jones's place. I've been visiting the island for more than 20 years, first as a tourist and now as a property owner, and I love just about everything about Graham and Anne. I love spending my summers here. I love my neighbors. What I don't love is my neighbor's sewage overflow running openly across my property. And this is an issue that may be familiar to some of you, since I've tried to get this addressed for a couple of years. There is a waterway that runs across my property that was created by the village many years ago. It carries stormwater runoff and sewage overflow from many houses upstream, out onto the beach below my property. And on a bad day, the stench makes it really difficult to sit on the deck and enjoy my property. And the same goes for my next-door neighbors. And I believe it's a threat to my personal health and to public health. You have little kids playing in the ditch and in the culvert on the beach. So the waterway is at least a quarter mile long. It starts up at Poodle Alley. And I've invited several of you to come down to my property and take a look for yourself, and that offer still stands. Please feel free to walk across my property anytime and come on a warm day when there hasn't been much rain, if you want the full sensory experience of this. And I know I'm not the only one who's called the village about this. Over the years, other residents upstream have complained about the foul smell, and to address the concerns, the village did install about 80 meters of concrete pipe to enclose and bury part of the waterway from Old Airport Road to my land across private property. And I don't know if they ran out of pipe when they did this, but the last section of buried pipe stops along my property, and the waterway reverts to an open water ditch. So there's about 41 meters of open ditch between the village-installed pipe on my land and the highway culvert under Pettis Cove Road. So I'm here asking that the village complete the infrastructure it started years ago and enclose the open ditch with a buried pipe. This is just what you've done in the past along all of the private property between Old Airport Road and my property. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to assume that no one else is going to come up, so we'll move on to new business, which is 14-1 UMB update. Counselor Boyd?
Yeah, so there was a UMB board meeting the last weekend of August, and so I just wanted to bring a couple of updates. There will be an email going around all Zone Four members that'll cover all this. But the new Minister of the Department of Environment and Local Government was present at the board meeting, Minister Savoy. He fielded a lot of questions from board members, and it was pretty good to and fro for the most part. One of the big things he was, one of all municipalities to be wary of, is continued reliance on our unconditional grants, because as we all know, those formulas are changing. So there will be more information on that coming. There was also discussions of untethering tax rates and allowing municipalities a little bit more flexibility, and was met with a lot of positive reception from him and his deputy minister, so we'll keep you updated on that as well. In UMB, we've hired a policy officer, so we now have a staff of three, and it looks like we'll be hiring one more, because there's a lot of growth. With amalgamation now, we're taking on a lot more, bigger municipalities, so it's bringing more money in, so we're trying to give all members more bang for their buck with more staff. There was a lot of discussion on the RSCs and their roles. The minister himself stated that not all RSCs have to look the same, but they should be tailored to meet the needs of the regions that they're serving. The UMB AGM is the last weekend of November, so registration's still open for that, so I would encourage everybody around the table, even if you can make it just a day. The sessions and the networking are very valuable, so it's time well spent. There's also some deals coming on municipal insurance rates. I know we've been talking about changing our insurance providers here. There was a few presentations there, so hoping in the next six months, or maybe even by the AGM, we'll have a firm number on insurance rates for the municipality through UMB, which it should offer substantial savings for all member communities. We're also working on election campaign strategy for the upcoming provincial election. We're going to be hiring a consultant to help us through that process, and we're going to be working on meetings with party leaders and hosting community engagement sessions with local candidates. Policing and housing continue to be the hot topics all around the province, and those communities are working on solutions to these, and there'll be more information to follow on that as well. And there will be a Zone Four meeting, most likely virtual, middle of next month, but I'll keep you all posted on that as well.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Item 14.2 is application for donation, the Community Events Committee, and that is an application for, I think, $200 for the haunted house, and you all have that in your package.
I'd make a motion to approve the donation.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14.3 is the Regional Service Commission update, and that's me, which flows well after Counselor Boyd's comments about the unconditional grant. This is more of just a heads-up that the RSC's budget is up at their board meeting this Thursday, and basically at that point, it then goes out for public review for 45 days. So once it's voted on on Thursday night, then we'll be back here for a discussion. Part of the changing formula with the unconditional grants and the equalization is that some of that money over the five years, as it's decreasing, is going to the RSC for funding. So I am, I'm a little concerned about what the impact that's going to be on our overall budget, not only if we're assuming some costs there, but also what the corresponding decrease in revenue is going to have here. The other thing that I, we need to be thinking about, I think, is they are looking at increases in tipping rates. They've lost a significant chunk of business from one of their US clients, and so therefore we're looking at in the $20-ish range, a ton increase. So, that's going to have a pretty significant impact on our budget process as well. So once we get the final numbers, after our last discussion, there was more, they were going back and tried to come up with a better number. We're back and forth between a couple, so hopefully we'll have a little bit more definitive number, but I just wanted to flag that for everybody. If you're really, really bored Thursday night, the meeting does air on YouTube, so there's nothing like watching a good board meeting, so. Any, any questions on that? I just didn't want everybody to be blindsided when we come back here next month, and it's like, here's what our tipping fees or what our solid waste amount is going to be. Surprise. 14-4 is AWAS upgrade. CAO Rayner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your package, you can see the quote from Approach Navigation Systems, "To upgrade the AWAS." The AWAS is our Automated Weather and Observation System. Currently, there's two options to access the AWAS. You either have to be within radio range and tuned to the frequency, or call in from a landline. Unfortunately, the landline, not just at the AWAS system, but I would say the whole way out the Bancroft Road, is not in the best shape, so when you call it, it's very staticky and you only get bits and pieces of it. So, the upgrade will bring us into the new era, which the second page of that quote is the webpage. So basically, this upgrade would give a web link, so it doesn't matter where in the world you are, click on the link, and all the information that the AWAS is giving you will all be on that site. So right now, if you, if you need to know what the temperature is, wind speed, direction, all that stuff, you have to call in. And for those of you that like to, I can give you the number, you can call it. It's absolutely horrible. There was actually a medevac flight the other night. The pilot called and said, "Can you go to the airport?" So I went to the airport, tuned the radio into the frequency, put him on speakerphone on my phone, so he could listen to what the weather conditions were. So, this here makes it a lot more accessible, especially now that we have off-island service providers, and so if they're sitting in Moncton trying to make a call on what the weather conditions might be on Graham and Anne, this will give it to them right at their fingertips.
Questions?
What does that use for communication? Like, does that use, like, one from Howard, one from Bell, or... How do they communicate with it?
We have Crave Technology Internet out there, so it'll all be through, through them.
Anyone else?
We do have the money for this in our airport budget, do we not?
Yeah, we have, we have room in the airport maintenance budget that we still have enough money left in it to cover it. I believe on your profit and loss sheet, if you go and look, under maintenance, we had $10,000 in the budget. So far, we've only spent $418, so.
I think we'd be looking for a motion to proceed.
I'd make a motion to go ahead with this.
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Green. Do we, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. In all seriousness, at some point, I think it may be worthwhile writing a letter to Bell about their infrastructure here on the island, because I know the ticket office is frequently having phone issues, and there's still a lot of businesses that do rely on phone service, so that may be something for another meeting when we think we have time. And haven't added 17 things to the agenda. So with that, we've already done the new librarian introduction, which that takes one thing off, so we'll move on to the public safety update. So Counselor Boyd, I'm going to ask you to help me with this a little bit, but last Thursday evening, September 7th, there was a meeting in St. Andrews with the mayors from the Regional Service Commission, Area 10, so the Charlotte County mayors, CAOs, and then I took Counselor Boyd with me, because we had the option to bring one additional person. So, it was Minister Chris Austin came to talk about what the province is looking at, what they're, the way they see the plan ahead, and then to hear from communities about what the issues are that we saw and what they may have missed. What struck me, what struck a lot of us, I think, right off the bat, was a series of graphs that showed our cop-to-pop ratio, which is the number of police we have per person. We're lower than the national average in New Brunswick and in Southwest New Brunswick in particular. And you can see the crime rate in Canada going down, but the crime rate in New Brunswick going up. So there was no hedging around the fact that there was a problem. They recognized that there were things that were happening. They said of the 80 officers that were announced in the last budget, 29 of them are going to go for specialized services, but 51 of them are going to be on the front line, and they're still working to fill those positions, but that is in the works. They emphasized, which we've talked about here, I know Corporal has mentioned this several times, a scan program, and just reminding citizens that that is out there for if there is a property that you are concerned about. There's a number that you can call for that. We spent a fair amount of time talking about non-criminal, for lack of a better way of saying it, activities that the RCMP find themselves doing, whether it's responding to mental health calls and then taking them to the hospital, and then taking them from the St. Stephen Hospital to the regional or for here to the mainland, and some of those things that are tying up RCMP officers, that maybe there's another way to look at doing that. So they're also talking about how to break down some of those silos and have people work together. And we spent some time on courts as well, the lack of court in Charlotte County, and some of the stress that puts on resources, and we made a pitch for virtual court for Graham and Anne in particular, because when you look at the cost of, not only for the RCMP time, but also for defendants and for people who are witnesses to go, to say nothing of the social impacts of traveling on the ferry with someone who may be going to court to testify against. So, that's, I think, sort of the highlights of what we talked about. I don't know if I've missed anything, or if that...
No, I think you, I think you hit most of it, but if I can add just a couple of things. I was very impressed with the minister's honesty. A lot of times when you hear a minister speak, it's always all the great things they've done and everything that's coming down the pipe from their department, but Minister Austin didn't, didn't pull any punches in saying how much better we need to do, or their department needs to do their job better in New Brunswick. So, he didn't speak long, but he opened the floor and stayed... the floor and, and stayed right away, so a lot of times the minister will sneak away and leave their deputy to be kind of skewered by the crowd. So, uh, it was good, I was impressed with his honesty, um, and it really puts in, into light, and I've said this before, um, we're, we're at an advantage with our RCMP coverage here, because, uh, our, our officers can't get called away to mutual aid, so they're here unless they get called to court or something that they've been called to on the mainland. We're fortunate that we have, uh, and I believe we still have the full complement, Corporal? Yeah, all here, all the time, for the most part. Um, but we're hearing a lot, and even at that meeting the other day with the mayor, um, communities that are without coverage for extended periods, so, so there is work to do, um, and so I will commend Minister Austin on, on his honesty and his openness, and, uh, it, I think it was a good meeting, and he certainly gave us some points that we'll be able to continue to pressure him on for, uh, some kind of production, so it's good.
Any questions? Comments? All right, the next item is a credit union update, and I just want to say, it's a little nerve-wracking to do this with Mike and Lauren sitting here, but they asked me to do this, which was very brave of them for letting me loose with their speaking points, so here we go. I understand that lot, it's been issued live probably about an hour ago, but they're, oh, my glasses, just so I can read what it is I'm supposed to be saying. Um, so over the past several months, a group of Grammontan residents has expressed interest in determining if a credit union would be able to provide financial products and services to the residents of the island. As part of this process, a survey is being conducted to evaluate the residents' banking needs. So it's an online survey, which I understand the link has been shared on Facebook, and we can share it once we get done the meeting, and I would encourage everybody to do that. It's open for full-time residents and seasonal residents. It's basically anybody who thinks they might want to use a credit union on the island, I would encourage you to fill it out. Basically, the survey is going to determine the level of service and what services may be able to be provided on the island, so if, if you're interested, this is really where the rubber hits the road, and it's where it's great to like a Facebook page and be part of the group, but I think if people are interested in this, this is where you need to take your time and fill out the survey. And if you know of someone who needs help, there's going to be PDF and paper copies here and at the grand aisle, or you can sit down and help them go through the survey. I understand it's lengthy, about thirty-seven questions, I think is what it is, so it's probably going to take you about fifteen minutes, but it's fifteen minutes well-spent if it results in some sort of banking services returning to the island. So, to do, and this is in conjunction with Brunswick Credit Union, which is formerly Bayview, because the sea, I believe, turned out to be a more expedient way to go about it versus starting a credit union here locally on the island, so this is just a way to sort of get us through the door a little bit faster. Um, if you have a business, I'm not sure if I said this, fill it, fill out a separate survey for your business, just so we can have that tracked, and I'm hoping I have hit everything. The end goal of the project will be have in-person banking services available on Grammontan again, hopefully before the end of twenty-three or early into twenty-four, so this could happen rather quickly, so I think the survey's going to be live for about a month, so, but don't wait till the end of the month, should fill it out tonight or sometime this week, or if we have a hurricane this weekend, it would be a lovely activity for you to do, to take fifteen minutes while you're stuck in the house. So I think for the, this has been a while coming, and it's a tremendous amount of work, but I, I'm really excited to see this coming, and I think this is a really, it's really good to see that there's something tangible coming finally, so hopefully everybody takes a minute to fill this out, and I think the next thing, the only other thing that I was supposed to add is, on the health centerpiece, they're hoping, hoping for a walkthrough opening sometime by the end of next month, so stay tuned, I think they're waiting for a few more pieces of equipment. Don't want to pin down a date till they make sure everything's there, so, I'm looking at Lauren, have I hit the high points?
The only thing I would add is that the survey is completely anonymous, does not ask for any personal name or address information, they're just looking to collect the data, and our, our biggest drive is to make sure that the community really shows up, um, and the numbers will count when it comes to how many people actually complete the survey, uh, and, and hopefully we'll be able to take a look and see how that services feel accordingly, so.
And so if you have a teenager or someone who also has their own bank account, or maybe wants to open a bank account, because they're getting their first job, it would be a great chance for them to fill out the survey as well, because numbers count.
And it's, it's not one survey per household, so every person who's above sixteen in a household can fill it out, so that will help increase the, the numbers.
So it really is about numbers, so just encourage everyone to share it, and this is, this is the chance that we've been waiting for, so. Questions or comments? You guys are kind of quiet tonight, which makes me nervous about what's about to happen. Fifteen-one is the Transportation Committee Report, which is supposed to be Counselor Layton, did you want to add anything from the airport project, or?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what he was going to present, but as far as the airport goes, uh, we're, we're ninety-eight percent done. Uh, the asphalt was done two weeks ago, the line painters were in, uh, the end of the week, they finished up on Friday, so the last thing we have on the list is just to have the permanent lighting reinstalled. It wasn't part of the original scope, we had to have a change order for that because of the elevation changes to, to take a little bit of the sweep out of the runway, they lowered the two-four end and raised the O-six end a little bit, so of course that changed the, the elevation of a lot of the pulpits and the lights, so we've got the subcontractor coming in to, to change those pulpits, and hopefully get the permanent lighting reinstalled sooner than later.
Questions or comments? The only other comment I'd add is I think we owe a huge thanks to the C A O who has been manning said lights for the last month and a half to two months, whether it's a medevac in the middle of the night, or on weekends, or for the last two or three weeks charging the solar panel lights. So it's, um, I don't think a lot of people maybe have realized that that's been part of his job description for the last little bit, but it's been a huge undertaking, so it's greatly appreciated. Moving on to item number seventeen, approval to pay invoices, and here's hoping I can follow the post-it notes. Right. Wait for Counselor Green to... So from the General Operating Fund, we have Island Home Hardware, the August statement is four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and fifteen cents. J I L Engineering for Playground Equipment for seventeen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Filmon Green for Street Signage, two thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. Dutchman Construction for the C and D Site Cleanup, fifty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and thirteen cents, and Dutchman Construction for Paving at the Village Office for eight thousand and fifty dollars.
I'd move that we pay these invoices out of the General Operating Fund?
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So, item seventeen point two is to pay from the General Capital Fund. Route seven-seven-six Tyern Auto for a storage unit for the airport was five hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, I believe that's for the aforementioned lighting. Brunswick Engineering for the airport design for forty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-six cents, and another one for Brunswick Engineering for the airport for forty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents. You heard the motion from Counselor Turner, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So for closed session, we have two items, both under legal, eighteen-one is for the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, and eighteen-two is legal for the C and D Site. Motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I'll recall this regular council meeting back to order from closed session. We talked about two items, the first one was a legal matter with Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, and there were two motions, Counselor Green.
Hey, I move that we direct the C A O to locate a third-party contractor to proceed with the cleanup of a property under the Dangerous and Unsightly Premises Act.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And then the second motion?
Be it resolved that the Council of the Village of Grammontan directs Keith Vernon Vern Faulkner, Senior Builder, Building Inspector of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, to A, craft a final warning letter to the owner of seventeen thirty-four Route seven-seven-six regarding the placement of structures therein without building permits as required by the Building Code Administration Act, and B, should the owner not obtain a building permit in a timely fashion, to seek financial penalties and remedies as allowed under the Building Code Administration Act and Provincial Offenses Procedures Act, that being the levying of fines for construction without a permit, fines for violating an order to comply, and if necessary, supplementary court orders to remove the building in question.
You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. The second item was a legal matter with the C and D Site, and we are directing the C A O to proceed as discussed, as we had previously had a motion, so. Our next regular council meeting is October second, here at the Community Center, seven-thirty PM.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.